Are you ready, Lan? You ready for the next one?
What's a public hearing is it, are we on time?
You ready?
1:40, yes.
Okay. Well, I have a public hearing. Have Kim call the rule.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Otel?
Present.
Commissioner Sukla?
Yes.
Administrator Brunner?
Here.
Attorney Baxter?
Here.
And Kim Purcell, Montezuma County Clerk and Recorder. The Montezuma County Planning and Zoning Commission is, whoops? Is that supposed to be the Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
The Montezuma County Commissioners will hold a public hearing for review and determination of recommendations to be made to the Board, I think I have the wrong one. The wrong first page. But, okay. The Montezuma County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing for review and determination of recommendations to be made to the Board of County Commissioners regarding a commercial rezoning request and high-impact permit application submitted by Jared Hanson and Karen Becker for the purpose of operating a dog breed, excuse me, dog breeding facility, a property located at 30773 Road V. Point Five, I'm sorry, V. Point Six, Dolores, Colorado, located north of Road V. Point Six, west of Road Thirty-One, situated in Section Three, Township Thirty-Seven North, Range Fifteen West, NMPM. The hearing will be held Monday, November Fifth, two thousand and eighteen, at 1:40 PM in the Commissioners' Hearing Room, Montezuma County Administrative Office, 109 West Main, Cortez, Colorado. Interested persons may attend and give input. Information may be obtained from the Planning Office, Room Two Seventy, Administrative Office at Cortez, Colorado, or accessed online at http montezumacounty.org, web department's planning. You may also contact the Planning Department at nine seven zero five six five two eight zero one with questions. The file can be inspected in the Planning Department during regular office hours dated this twenty-third day of September two thousand and eighteen. Kim Purcell, Clerk, Board of County Commissioners, Montezuma County, Colorado, published in the Journal on Friday, October Twenty-Sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you, Kim.
We'll give you a copy of this. This is what was published today.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I apologize for the non-color aerial maps. We don't have that.
We've been having color issues with printers.
I thought we were getting another.
We are, but it's thirty days out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We're making do.
We have a little hitch in our giddy up right now.
All right, all right.
Hopefully we can get through it.
Apologies, due noted.
Okay. This particular application has been in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission twice. Mr. Hanson and Mrs. Becker are wanting to have a dog breeding facility on their property. They actually have two properties located in a, in a three-property subdivision. They had to go through getting non-opposition letters from the other property owner in the subdivision to, in order to accommodate the change in the covenants which wouldn't allow their potential business, well, I should say their existing business. They did do that. We have had some opposition from neighbors as far as noise and dogs getting out and things like that. I don't think it's the smaller dogs that people complained about. I think it was more the larger dogs. I was, I was presented today with a resolution from some neighbors in the area that's Resolution two thousand and twelve seventeen that indicates that, that lines out dogs at large, dogs barking, noise control, things of that nature. It was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did not have any opposition from any of the agencies that were notified. We did, we did hear from a couple neighbors, but it was voted to approve the application and certification of use instead of a high-impact permit because the Planning Commission felt that they didn't want to do a high-impact permit and rezoning in the event that they decided to stop doing their business. They didn't want to have that property zoned commercially and allow that to open up to additional uses. So certification of use which would restrict their, their proposed use in the event that they decided to relocate, then it would, it would, that would dissolve.
It would revert back to.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It would revert back to ag-residential.
Mm-hmm.
And then they're just, I guess their conditions were noise mitigation. They, they didn't really have any expectations. They didn't have anything to, to put on the table. I know that Mr. Hanson said that he does have a, he does have a barn that he thought that maybe could be useful, but maybe could not, it would be worse. So we're here today to figure out how we, how we move forward.
What was the resolution you said you just got today?
It's twelfth, two thousand and twelve seventeen. I can, let you. That was brought into effect when, when the dog hotel.
Up on One Eighty-Four?
When that was, was going on, and you remember we had all those complaints about how the, the sound was.
Mm-hmm.
We were breeding up the canyon and things like that, and so that's how that, that came to fruition.
Is that the resolution? That, that would have been before Commissioner Otel and myself.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
It was before.
It was over at the annex. I remember going to that meeting.
It was in two thousand and twelve. That was before they closed down the business.
Do you have it?
I don't, but I can put it on there if you like.
How big a facility are we talking here? How, how many, how many breeding animals do you, I mean, how big is, how big is this?
Well, we, we have two, two main types of dogs. We have Alaskan Malamutes that live outdoors next to our house, and then we have a small toy breed. They're called Beaver Terriers. They're a new breed here in the United States, and they live in our house.
Those, those live in the house with you. They're indoors?
Correct. Yeah, during the day they're outside playing. We have a doggy door. They can go in and out of the house as they choose.
So how, how many breeding pairs of the, did you say Malamutes?
The Malamutes have twenty-one.
Twenty-one breeding, ooh, that's.
Yep.
Twenty-one dogs.
Yeah. So are, so you're, you're expecting ten litters, ten litters? That's, I mean, are all, all those breeding animals, the twenty-one you got?
Not all of them. There are some that are juveniles. They're too young to breed. And we do have one rescue dog that we got from the shelter in Durango that's been spayed. She's just living with us, but we probably have five to eight litters a year.
And how many is in the litter?
It varies, two to eight.
No opposition from your neighbors?
There is opposition from the neighbors.
There is opposition from the neighbors?
Yes.
But not from the direct neighbors, though. We got non-opposition letters from the neighbors that are next to our lots.
So how far away are the neighbors that are in opposition to this?
Over quarter mile.
Quarter mile.
I, I. Can I? We'll have public comment in a minute.
You know, it being in a canyon area and up on, up on the mesa and sound carries and, so what I've been told from the neighbors is that they would, that they're not necessarily opposed to the operation as a whole, but they are, you know, they would like to see a reduction in the amount of animals that they can have. They're not worried about the smaller breed. They're worried, you know, they're worried about the larger breed. I don't, I don't know what kind of mitigation we can come up with for that, or if Mr. Hanson is willing to mitigate that, or if there's a contained facility that we can, we can put them in. But there, there has been, I talked to the Sheriff's Office this morning, and there has been complaints after I got presented with the resolution. I did contact the Sheriff's Office, and they did say that there, there were complaints that have been made, but no one wants to pursue them because they're going through this process at this time.
In your statement when you first started, something about maybe some dogs got away or off the property, what did you say?
There, there's been a couple times when I think dogs have gotten.
That has never happened.
Okay, that's just what I've, was notified of.
All the Alaskan Malamutes have their own individual area, dog run there, twenty by forty feet, and in, and around that is another fence line. So even if they were to get out of their own dog run, they'd still be contained within another fence. They've never gotten out of that.
And it is, I mean, I did go out there and look at it, and it is a very nice facility. They do have covered, they're covered and fenced areas.
So noise is really the biggest?
I think so, yes.
It has never been an issue the last four years, though. It's just recently, during one of our inspections, it came up that we should get a special permit for the county, and I think because we're in this process now, maybe there's rumors that we're trying to do something new or big or different, but it's not that anything is changing. It's all the same.
So you, you've been operating this for some time? I mean, you've had, you've had this.
Two thousand.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Yeah.
Hmm.
And I was never complained or anything, so.
Only until we started this process has there been anything noted, notified to us that our neighbors had any concerns about noise. I mean, I'm outside all the time working with them. I see them regularly. You know, it's always small chit-chat, talking, saying hi, being neighborly, but never a voice of concern about what we're doing.
Hmm.
Until now.
So basically, this operation is going to continue just as it has been operating since two thousand and fourteen?
In fact, we reduced, we, we used to have little Pomeranians, and we're not breeding those anymore. So it's actually smaller than it was last year and the year before.
Hmm. So what prompted you to come in and go through this process? I guess, I mean.
To be honest, I, I have no idea where this came from. Steve Nolan, who's also our neighbor, stopped by and mentioned that we need to pursue some type of permit with the county, and then asked me to get in contact with Deputy Hoon from the Sheriff's Department, contacted him, and he also recommended trying to get some kind of permit in place with the county.
Hmm.
And there's also been a kind of a, an argument about the definition of agriculture and whether breeding dogs, and this is not just, this is not just with these folks, but we've, I'm running into this a little bit more and more, what the definition of agriculture is and whether or not that applies to animals and, or dogs and cats and, and the breeding of such. And I think, in, in speaking with Sheriff Nolan, I'm sorry, their definition of agriculture is, is livestock and, and.
Not domesticated animals.
No, not domesticated animals.
Mm-hmm. Did the Planning Commission send a recommendation with their, after they've reviewed this?
They did. They just, and it was, it was a pretty, it was vague. They just said conditions to the motion were noise mitigation, which I don't know what that, I mean, that could mean a lot of, that, that could mean a reduction of animals, that could mean putting them in a closed area, that could mean.
Hmm.
I know that the, one of the neighbors that I spoke to specifically, I know that there were some considerations of reducing the barking surgically?
Yeah, there, there's a procedure where we can have the animals debarked, but.
It's cutting their vocal cords. It's not a nice thing to do.
And the neighbors said if it comes down to that, never mind.
How many complaints do you have, and what are they complaining about?
Um, four and the noise.
All of them same?
They, I mean, I, the Planning Commission members, I mean, you guys really have really good Planning Commission members who go out and visit things. I mean, we all do, go out and do site visits, and they went out there, and the facility is very well-kept. These animals are very well taken care of. I mean, I, that is absolutely not the concern. I think the concern of the neighbors is noise, but they also don't want to do that procedure if it comes to that. They, they would rather see if it comes down to that, a reduction in, in animals or a enclosed facility that would, you know.
How is them, where they, yeah.
House noise a little bit better.
But you're saying that you haven't had any complaints from adjoining property owners, but?
I haven't had any complaints about these folks since, until, like they said, until they started this process. Once they started this process, I have.
We had a covenants on the property that does not allow our lot, the next lot, and to neighbor lots to do any business on the property or, or breed any animals.
That's correct.
And in order to get that changed, we had to talk to our neighbors, the real neighbors that are next door, and they all wrote an opposition letter and said they have no issue with us doing what we're doing.
And I have those.
I do too.
So the, the opposition is.
The non-opposition. They're, they're not, the, the people in the, in the subdivision are not opposed. It's not the people in the subdivision that are opposed. It's people around the subdivision.
And I think the confusion is also in the letter that we sent out to everyone. It says we want to rezone into commercial, which is not what we thought we're doing. I thought it was just like a special use permit. So maybe they all think we're going to make this into something commercial, and that's why they're opposed, because they don't want to have that.
Well, and what, what we did and what we discussed with the Planning and Zoning Commission is, you know, instead of having, they've already been to the Planning and Zoning Commission twice. So for us, it's always, in our opinion, better to ask for this and then get this at you guys' discretion than have to have them go through this process again and again and again. If we're not, if we ask for a commercial rezoning, which is what, that, that was the big thing in the beginning, if you don't recall at the first meeting, that was, that was the, I, I mean, that was kind of the clincher that, that sent us back the second time, which they, that's when they said special use permit that they should, which I explained that to you guys. So we were asking, I, I mean, we put in the public notice that we're asking for that because anything under that is not going to require any additional public notices or them sending out certified mailings again. But if, if, you know, you guys decided that they would have to do commercial rezoning, then they would have to do that again, and they would have to go back through this process. So it's easier to move down than up, I guess, if that makes sense.
So what again, did you say that you would call this, it's not commercial rezoning?
It would be a special use permit. So then if it's just a special use permit, that's temporary and interim in nature. So if they decided not to, you know, if they decided to relocate their business to a different location, once they left, that property would not have commercial rezoning on it.
Got you.
It would revert back to ag-residential, and whoever came back in would have to reapply for, you know, any, anything like that, instead of it being already commercially zoned where they had certain uses by right and would have to go through that.
Would the special use permit allow for expansion of their operation?
Yes. Well, it would have to go through you, but yes. It would have to be reviewed by the Commissioners.
If they were to increase that, what, within a ten percent?
Yes, sir.
I'm good.
Nothing yet.
All right. We'll, we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody has public comment, come up to the podium over here, state your name and address, and tell us what you have to say.
Hi. My name is Lloyd Calvert, and I'm a proxy for my parents. I live at one nine five eight one, Road Thirty-One in Dolores. We would be north of the line there. It's the Sophia Retreat and Event Center who I'm representing, and my parents are the owners. Commissioners, as owners and operators of the Sophia Retreat Center, we would like to provide the following input in regards to the commercial rezoning request and high-impact permit application by Jared Hanson and Karen Becker for the purpose of the operation of a dog breeding facility on the property three zero seven seven three, Road V. Six, Dolores. Sorry, catch my breath. Our retreat center is adjacent to and north of the property being considered. First, we want to share that Jared and Karen are good neighbors and have tried to mitigate the effects on their neighbors from their current dog breeding operation. Unfortunately, the size of their operation is already resulting in noise levels that are impacting business at our center. We are getting complaints from our lodging guests about the barking dogs, and it's difficult for our patrons to have an outdoor wedding or any other activity associated with other events held at the center. Many events facilitators are looking for peace and solitude for their events. It is hard to get day or night. Jared has been gracious and worked with us in the past to put dogs away and provide a quiet period of time for act or, for outdoor activities, but events don't always run on time, and it limits the brides or facilitator's flexibility. It also makes it difficult for us to attract and sign future events. Many of the event coordinators come to Sophia to escape the noise of the city and are looking for an environment that allows their workshop or seminar attendees to relax and unwind. The noise has also, excuse me, the noise also has an effect on our lodging guests who are looking for rest and relaxation. It is hard for them to take a walk and enjoy a labyrinth with the barking. The noise also makes it difficult at night for them to sleep with the window open or to enjoy the fresh, clean air, or sit out under the stars and enjoy the night skies, not polluted by the big cities. We would like to go on record as being opposed to any rezoning and the high-impact permit. We are, also submit that our current zoning requirements and covenants remain in effect, including the number of animals and the size of business operations, and are enforced. The current operation is already negatively affecting business, the quality we can provide our patrons, and more importantly, the value of our property. Any increase of size of the operation will definitely create bigger issues with all our concerns. If you, as Commissioners, see fit to approve the rezoning, we ask that it comes with restriction on the number of animals and the noise until the noise problem can be mitigated and eliminated to allow both businesses to operate in close proximity without any negative effects to either business. We just ask that we are able to operate the center in a way that is attractive to the patrons who have used our facilities in the past and provide our lodgers a calm, peaceful environment where they can enjoy the serenity of our property in southwest Colorado. We wish only the best for Jared and Karen and their business, but not at the expense of our business or the value of our property. We have worked hard the last four years to grow our operation and bring new people to the area. We appreciate your considering our input and the impact of our interests. Respectfully, Vince and Mary Kramer.
Thank you.
Did, I do have one question for you, Jared or Lloyd. I mean, did you, did you guys protest this at the Planning and Zoning meeting?
Uh, no, and I'm not up on that. I think we missed it.
And also, in the letter, it said that, that it was a commercial rezoning, but she's saying it's going to be special use permit to your parents. Do they know that?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Diane Roberts, three zero seven six two, Road V. Point Six. My husband.
I'm Robert Mackey.
So we live in the lot across the road from them?
Across the road, which isn't, she said a quarter mile, but our front door to where the Malamutes, our house is at most two hundred yards, so that's quite, that's a lot different, a quarter of a mile. But so our prob, you know, the noise mitigation is, the noise is our issue. Because it wakes us up at night when the dogs bark, you know, so and that can be any time of the night, and it can be multiple times of the night.
And as everyone has said, they do have a really nice facility, and the small dogs, they stay inside, they're quiet. So our only issue is the noise. Otherwise, and kind of embarrassed, we don't even know them because we're kind of stay to ourselves. We don't know Jared and Karen, and so we're not complaining about them, we're just complaining only about the noise. When the big dogs came, that, that's when the noise started, and so we didn't know, we just looked on, online, and they have two very nice websites, and they're approved by all the dog kind of organizations, and so when we saw that, we just assumed that it was a business, or, well, it is a business, but we assumed it was like permitted business because of all the information there. So that's why we never, you know, it's been said, why didn't people complain before? Because we didn't know we could complain because we thought it was already a, a commercial business or whatever. So when we found out that it wasn't, and we did have a voice, then we, and we came, I came to one of the meetings and said that. So our, like I said, our issue is, if, if that's, so we live, this is our house right here.
Mm-hmm.
So we're right across, and we're not, like I said, we're not in that subdivision which was on the other side of the road. So, and we're uphill, so the sound comes right up. So, and we're kind of like the Sophie's people, you know, we want the best for them, and we don't want their livelihood gone away, but the noise is pretty offensive to our sleeping and whatnot, and maybe.
So we, we bought, we moved in there in two thousand and fifteen, and we're about three ways, three years away from retirement, so that's, we want peace and quiet out in the country. That's why we chose to retire there, so.
And the big dogs weren't there then. It was just the little ones, and like he said, they go inside at night, so they're pretty quiet, anyway.
Well, how lo, how long is, have you noticed the barking then?
Well, since.
Wouldn't, I don't know, well, how long have you had the big dogs, a year and a half? For a year?
Two years.
About two and a half, three years.
Yeah. And it's kind of grown with the number of them, so, like, we didn't, like, that's why we have never said anything. We didn't know we had a right to say anything. And then when the notice came out, it was like, oh, we can say something, so, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment.
We would like a chance to respond.
Would you like to say something further?
Sure. Vince and Mary Kramer were aware that the Planning and Zoning Commissioners did recommend a special use permit. I spoke to them on the phone yesterday evening. They had contacted me, letting me know they were going to be opposing the rezoning or high-impact permit. I tried to explain and clarify that that's not what we're trying to do. His concern over the phone was that it would have an effect on their land value. He didn't mention anything about the noise. So we did some investigation as far as their business goes. We read, read all of their online reviews from the patrons that Lloyd had talked about. There's not, there's many, many positive reviews. There's not too many negative ones, and of the negative ones, there's nothing that's mentioned about the noise, our dogs, or anything. And of all the positive ones that they have, many of, they talk about how it's very relaxing and quiet to come to the Sophia Retreat Center. So there's some differences there.
Is the place for sale?
From what their customers are saying versus what Vince and Mary Kramer are stating. They also have the property listed for sale right now, and they originally bought it for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars four years ago. They're asking one and a half million dollars four years later. So to me, the, the property values in their mind have gone up, not down, because of what we're doing there. And they're also a commercial property, so I don't see how us getting a special use permit is going to reduce the value of their property.
They had eight hundred cows on a property last summer. It was noisy as heck. I mean, the, the noise wasn't an issue then, and it was in the last four years. And we had the dogs when they bought the place. So it's, I think it's just because it's for sale, and, and like I said before, people think if we're rezoning commercial, it will affect other properties, surrounding properties, and make their, their cheaper or what? people think if we're rezoning commercial, it will affect other properties, surrounding properties and maybe their, their chiva or what. But the, the retreat center is already commercial. It's the only commercial property in the area. And, and we're not even trying to do that. We just want to keep doing like what we're doing.
And I just want to digress and just say that, that was the recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, that they thought that that would be the appropriate approach. I, I know that once we went back to them the second time and brought up the special use permit, they, they were still okay with that. But again, I, I just, and this could quite possibly be my fault, but again, these guys have been through quite a bit and I just didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that we were covered on all the bases that we needed to. And if, and if we went from here to here, that would be better than trying to go from here to here. So that's, that's why.
I'd like to ask Jason a question. Is there, or Jared, excuse me. Is there any way you could mitigate your, your animals at night? Where, I, I understand the neighbors that spoke there and, and I've, I've had neighbors before that have had dogs that like to bark all night long and it is not, it is not pleasant. So is there, is there some method or some type of enclosure that you can move your large animals into at night where their barking's not going to be affecting people across the road or people up at Sophia or where you can keep that noise mitigation down?
There are some things we can try. I do have a barn. If I was to work inside that build, smaller dog runs just for temporary enclosure at night, I can, I can house them all in there. It's not, I mean, it's just, it's not ideal, but.
I'm sure, but.
It's just metal. That's all it is. Metal beams and, and metal walls. There's no insulation, anything. So I don't know if that's going to, you know.
There's also other neighbors with dogs. There's one neighbor who has property lying with the Sophia Retreats and they have 10 dogs. And it's just, you know how this goes. One dog barks over here and then those neighbor's dogs bark and then the next one bark and out, we do have a dog club and we rented the whole Sophia Retreat Center for three days in, in September. And they all had their dogs there and we were all there renting out the place, having a fun weekend with all our dogs. And all those visitors could not hear our dogs at our home because we talked to them about it. But there were surrounding neighbors who do have dogs who also bark. Like one of them has like 10 dogs. So even if we isolate the barn and do a lot of stuff and, and try to figure all this out, it doesn't mean that it's going to be quiet. There's a bunch of coyotes out there that make funny noises at night. I mean, the coyotes are gone because our dogs are outside at night. But if we put them in the barn at night, then that doesn't mean that it's going to be silent.
And you also have to understand, it's a, they're Alaskan Malamutes. They don't typically bark. They howl. And they howl altogether sometimes simultaneously like they're singing a song. But it only lasts one to two minutes and then it's silence. It's not that it's continuous all night long barking. It just comes and it goes. And it's usually brought on by the deer passing through. They hear a noise, maybe, you know, the neighbor went outside late at night and they could hear the door close, something like that.
You said you had some planning and zoning directors go out there?
Yeah. And no, you know, and I, again.
What did they say? What was their response?
Well, they said that the facility was absolutely wonderful. I know that Mr. Hanson, he met with a couple of them.
Yeah, Raymond Boyd, he came out and I got to show him around.
Well, Clayton.
Yeah.
We got eight full-time employees there. It's not that it's not organized. There's people working there. We have, in the last 90 days, we have been inspected by the USDA, by the Colorado Department of Agriculture, by the Humane Society, by the Sheriff's Department.
AKC.
The American Kennel Club. They all come and check and it's all nice and compliant. We show our dogs. We have the top winning dogs of the breed in the country. We have events organizing. We have a lot of visitors coming to pick up their puppies. They rent places in Cortez and in Dolores. They fly into Cortez Airport. There is a lot of, how you say that, economic impact.
Economic impact because of what we do.
All our supplies come from local.
But I, I, I mean, you guys also, they don't have the majority of their, their clientele going out to their property. They, they transport, fly, put, put their puppies on airplanes, send them to people. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, that there's not like a whole bunch of.
No.
No.
Over the year, the visitors.
Can I get some road impact fees and stuff going on here? Yeah, I hear you. This is getting better every, by the minute, yeah.
When we, when we looked at the application and the high-impact permit, one of the thresholds is that we had 15 or more visitors, round trip visitors per day. I can't even stretch that to make 10. Between UPS, FedEx, USPS, myself and two visitors and a couple of employees.
And that's just what I wanted to, to say.
No, the, the most happy is the water. When everyone holds their water up the road with the, with the water tanks, that's what's happening all day.
But that's not yours.
No.
No, we have a well.
How many of the big dogs did you say that you?
Twenty-one. So as far as additional things for noise mitigation, I've researched, you know, sound barrier type things. What I don't want to do is build a 20-foot cement wall all the way around my property to try to contain it and probably doesn't even work. So I've looked at some natural type barriers, which would be like evergreen type trees that can grow 30, 40 feet tall, create a wind barrier which would then stop the noise from being pushed with the wind around to surrounding areas. In addition, I can look into the barn and get that set up for nighttime enclosures. We've tried barking collars, but they just pull them off each other. And the last scenario, which we don't want to do, is have them debarking.
Yeah.
Of those 21, how many are male and how many are female?
Four of them are male. And 17 female.
So 17 are actually being bred?
Not, not all of them. There's maybe 10 that have ever had litters over the course of three years.
Do you have any intention of expanding it?
We are not going to expand.
No, we're downsizing. We already gave four of the dogs away after the evacuation. We had to evacuate the whole thing with a fire.
With a fire?
And we were already in the process here and we tried to figure out what are we going to do? Are we just surgically remove the barking or what? So we just started and, and gave four dogs, adult breeding dogs, away already.
Of the Malamutes.
To reduce it.
So we had 25.
Allow it as long as we get them away.
Is there such thing as a temporary, special use permit?
That's basically what the Planning and Zoning Commission is proposing, is restricting the use to what they're doing now. They also, they also put a condition to the motion that, to try and find a way to mitigate the noise, which I, I know they've been trying to figure out a way to do that, which you guys are also, well, I mean, can, right, John, they can put, we can review this and.
They can put whatever conditions we want on it.
Yeah, so I mean, we can review it in a couple of months and see if, if anything's been mitigated or if, you know, the public is, is appeased with what they have done to mitigate that.
Well, part, part of that, part of our land use code revolves around decibels of noise. Has anybody done a measurement of the decibels of noise and their?
We have always put that, that has always been the burden of the adjacent property owner. And as you can recall, with oil and gas development and things of that nature, we've seen a lot of, a lot of cellphone apps that will do that.
Measure that.
That's not accurate for those kind of readings. We don't have, we don't have a decibel meter. So they would have to contract someone or. Or we can buy one if you want to give them money.
Diane, do you know or anybody else know whether that hay bale wall that they built there on 184 was effective or not for noise reduction?
It was effective initially, but they also had sheep and.
Sheep ate the hay.
Yes, so then they ate it and then it kind of just fell down and then it wasn't effective anymore. But, but then by that time, they were, that business had dissolved, so.
But it, but it was effective to start with?
It was, yes. But it, and it was straw, yeah. Which is a lot cheaper than hay right now.
We got a lot of deer and elk in the canyon.
Yeah, I know.
We'll have more, babe.
I'm up for letting them go a couple of months. I don't, I'm not for sure which conditions. And then I'd like to hear what the neighbors have to say a couple of months later. If what they've done is mitigated. I got to be honest, I, I, I live over by the golf course and I had a neighbor that had some dogs that drove me nuts. They, we couldn't even open our sliding glass door open at night because they got so loud. Then they moved away and the dogs went away and I sleep like a baby now. But I'm also a proponent of private property rights. And I guess when you'd said about the sheriff saying, well, we, what they define as agriculture, I don't think that that's been defined yet. That's what the sheriff's saying, but that is that what it says in our land use code.
It does not, we don't have definitions.
Right.
So I, I have to defer to.
No, I, no, I'm not, I'm just saying that's, that's debatable of what is agriculture and what isn't at this time.
Animal husbandry falls under agriculture and you're doing animal husbandry, so. Well, I'm, I'm of the mind of Commissioner Sukla. I'd like, I'd like to see you find a way to be able to mitigate your, your noise to your neighbors. I think that's important because that, that's not, that's not fun to, to, to live with, with, you know, unmitigated noise that disturbs you. So I, I would be willing to go with something on a temporary basis and see if you guys can come to some reconciliation with the neighbors across the road and, and see what you can do to mitigate some of that sound traveling up to them. And only in the nighttime. The daytime, I don't think, daytime's not, daytime's not a problem, is it? Mostly at night. Yeah, so.
It's just like she said, it's when a deer goes by or something, when they all howl, that's enough to wake you right up.
Yeah, yeah. So how do we put that into a motion?
How much time? Because still to just because, we have to do it, well, in my opinion, I think a, a date and time's certain because if, if we don't do that, then we're going to have to redo this public hearing, so you guys.
Six, six months, enough for you guys to work on that?
Yeah. We had to talk to the USDA department about that because they have regulations and we have to do everything how they say. And if we actually move the dogs into a building, it's not that we can just put a roof and a door. There is a lot of requirements, so it's not something we can just.
Do it the snap of your finger. You just can't run them into a shed and, yeah, you have to make it.
You have to build it.
Accommodates and protects them and all that.
We're following the rules of, of the United States government, basically, USDA, so.
Six months would be.
Yeah, six months is sufficient.
Six months is good. That's what spring might do.
Six months work for you guys to see if we can come to some resolve there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe they can use magic seeds or rose trees.
Grow 10 feet a day and get 100 foot, yeah, get a 100-foot tree pretty quick, yeah. There's some guys here with fertilizer, might have something to be able to help that with. I don't know. They might be able to help you out. Yeah, there you go. Might get a heck of a deal going. You want to make the motion, Commissioner, or do you want me to?
I'd move to approve, just let me find my bearings here.
Can we continue to make that in order to give them time to mitigate the sound?
Say that again.
The continuance to May 7th.
May 7th.
Okay, I'd move to continue this meeting to May 7th of 2019 for Jared Hanson and Karen Beckler. Becker? To see if they can do some mitigation on the noise issue with their dog breeding facility.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to continue this hearing to May, what was?
Seven?
Seven, 2019 for, to see if the, there can be a mitigation for the noise concern on a application submitted by Jared, Jared Hanson and Karen Becker for the purpose of operating a dog breeding facility on property located at 30773, Road V.6, Dolores, Colorado. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, good luck.
Karen, you sound like you're from Texas.